Welcome to Eden Prairie Planning Commission for Monday, July 27, 2020. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. I'm going to sneak the mask off while I'm talking. Our first topic for tonight is approval of the agenda. Are there any comments or questions or revisions to the agenda? Not seeing any. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the agenda.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. So now our second order of business is approval of the minutes from the meeting, the July 13 Planning Commission meeting. Does anybody have any questions, comments, revisions to the meeting minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Gooding moved to approve. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Commissioner Toomey, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, let's get to our public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. The first is the Prairie Heights project. It's a request for a planned unit development concept review on 9.6 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 9.6 acres, zoning district change from rural to R-9.5 on 9.6 acres, and a preliminary plat to create 24 lots and four outlots on 9.6 acres. Given that as our topic, would the proponent please come forward and present the project to the commission?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Planning Commission members. Is it okay if I take this off while I'm speaking up here?
Yes.
Okay. You'll be able to hear me a little bit better. My name is Pat Hiller. I'm one of the partners with Norton Homes. I'm here with Dave Nash tonight with Alliant Engineering, and Dave is the engineer for the project, and so he's here to answer any questions along with myself. And I'd like to just walk through a PowerPoint presentation that we put together and give you an overview of the project. Am I doing Julie?
Technical difficulties. There we go.
Okay. So Prairie Heights is proposed to be a 24-unit detached villa townhome project, so it's a single-family home and in a full snow-and-mow association where attracting, we think, to be the empty nester and on-up type buyer who's moving out of a two-story looking for that one-level living with a full-service association. These types of developments are very popular in the Twin Cities. They sell very well, and they're really fitting in market need, and so that's what we're looking to do here. The finished home sizes, including the lower level, 3,000 to 3,500 square feet, price ranges to 700s primarily, a few may get up into the 800s, and that's the basic overview of the site. We'd like to get started this fall with grading if we're approved tonight and next month at the council. So we are bringing a PUD application here. The site is low-density residential now, up to five units. We're right in the middle of that at 2.58, so we are requesting a zoning change from rural to the 9.5, R19.5, with the PUD variances you see there, a little bit narrower lot width, and some of them get narrower when we have the cul-de-sac and we have kind of an arc on the right and right out with the lot sort of pie-shaped towards the street a little more, but the building pads are, it's all the same-sized homes even when we're in those pie-shaped lots. So that's just the arc length that we're requesting site there as well. This is the overall site layout here, and as you can see to the northeast of the site, we're making a connection to the existing Surrey Street road stub that's in the Tree Farm neighborhood there. The water and sewer is sitting right there, and that's where we're picking up water and sewer connections. And then we're proposing to take Surrey Street to the west and then make a connection onto Pioneer Trail. I have a better-looking graphic here in a minute that will show you, to make a right-in, right-out connection to Pioneer Trail, and then there's a southerly direction Liberty Court cul-de-sac as well. So this is more of a marketing version of the plan, of the site plan here. We're looking to do three types of homes. We're going to vary the colors in the fronts a little bit so that each house isn't identical, but these are the three basic shapes, and then the three models that we're proposing and the number of lots that each of those models would go on based on the building pad sizes. And then we had an artist do kind of a neighborhood rendering, kind of a street scape view so you can see what the neighborhood will look like when it's finished. Here are the three home plans here. Two of them have a 90-degree turn garage. One is a little bit better than, bigger than the other. The Mitchell's kind of our smaller one. The Bryant adds a third-stall garage. It's a little bit bigger plan. And then the starring plan is the front-facing garage. There's three lots where that shape works a little bit better. So those are the basic ideas and the basic shapes, and we'll do some front elevation variance around that, but that's kind of the theme and the look we're going with for the neighborhood here. The Prairie Heights neighborhood does fall within the Zone C area, recently adopted by the Jasbee Ordinance, so it is permitted to have residential construction. There is a requirement to do interior noise mitigation, and I'll go over that in a little bit. It primarily involves using the higher noise rate of windows, and there's a formula we have to go through to get that to work. Each of that will be submitted with each building permit application, the compliance with that interior noise mitigation, and we just have to knock off a certain number of decibels based on the formula. Building heights, there's also the jazz, the Zone C restricts building heights and construction equipment heights. We're going to be nowhere near those maximum heights, so we'll be well within that. And then we are required to provide a disclosure to each new buyer, letting them know, hey, there's an airport right there, there will be some airport noise. So there's a disclosure that each homeowner will have to agree to before they buy. Sustainability, so our stormwater infiltration basins do meet all the city and watershed district standards, and we've gone through that review so far with the watershed district, other than a minor couple of cleanup items, I think, were through their planning and their approvals. The ponds are thought to be dry most of the time since we're infiltrating, other than a major rain event, they're not going to hold water very long. They will drain into the ground and be dry virtually all of the time. We're proposing to plant some native species around the storm basins to try to make them look a little more natural. And then there's also an outlot A north of Pioneer Trail. It's kind of an old remnant piece that you see on the plat. We're proposing to donate that to the city if the city wants it. We don't need it. It's currently just open space, and it can remain that way, so that is something that is out there if the city wants to talk further about that. Electric vehicle ready in the garage, so we'll be basically wiring a box in the garage, and later on a plug can be installed for an electric car. We'll put them in a location that makes sense for an electric vehicle. And so, and here we're talking about the increased noise rating on the windows. Another thing I didn't put on the list is high-energy efficiency, high-energy, energy-efficient appliances will be used within the house as well. Okay, traffic impacts. We did complete a traffic study, and since we're in this COVID, working-from-home mode, an accurate traffic count really can't be had now, so we did go back and look at some analytical data. So we did, Alliant Engineering's traffic experts went back and looked at some analytical databases and looked at a bunch of them and looked at the impact of the neighborhood. And the conclusion basically was that the impact was thought to be minimal in the area, and the actual report did not recommend any roadway improvements. But nevertheless, we've heard from the neighbors some concerns about traffic through their neighborhood and the one tight intersection there at Woodridge, and so we're still proposing a right-in, right-out onto Pioneer Trail, which is as much as Hennepin County is going to let us do. They won't allow anything more than that, but they'll work with us on that, and that will alleviate some of the traffic concerns in the neighborhood, and we're going to do that anyway, even though the traffic report did not recommend any roadway improvements. So on June 4, we held a neighborhood meeting outside of the Surrey Street road stub, and we had about 40 people come out from the neighborhood, and there was a lot of concerns The two loud and clear ones that I heard were the construction traffic for the site development and all 24 homes coming through that Woodridge intersection and into the neighborhood, creating a lot of noise and additional unneeded, unwanted traffic. The other one was, in our initial design, we had that connection to Pioneer Trail. On a phase two, after we had finished a sufficient number of phase lots, first-phase lots, we would build out that intersection in a second phase. The neighborhood wanted that done initially in phase one, so as a result, we now have eliminated the phasing. All 24 lots are going to get built out, including the right-in, right-out in the first phase. And then we're going to, we've requested to have the existing driveway to the north, which I'll show you in a minute. The existing driveway to the north remain open as a construction entrance throughout the entirety of the project, so that we can bring home construction traffic through there and in addition to the site development traffic. So that's, if that's approved, then I think we can alleviate that concern of the neighbors'. If you go back one slide maybe, or, yeah, right there. So if you see, can you point to the north driveway where it comes in right there? Okay, so that's the current driveway to what was the Modine property, and so that, the major part of the site is the Modine. It used to be open and owned by the Modines. The proposal is to keep that driveway open throughout the construction, and then the house that kind of runs right next to it would probably be the last house built, and then we'd have to close it up at that point. So there is, I'll go back one more time, sorry. So there is a median cut on Pioneer Trail right there now, so you can, so westbound you can make a southbound turn right there, and so we're proposing to leave that open during construction. So I think that's the neighborhood concerns. Move on to the next one then. So MAC property access. So last week we had a conference call, well, a couple weeks ago we had a conference call with the MAC and also one last week, and the initial proposal was to provide some connectivity to their site. You can see kind of a rendering on the MAC property site to the south where there's some future commercial concept that they had spent some time working on. The proposal we had initially come up with here had Liberty Court, the cul-de-sac with a right-ofway. You can see kind of the right-ofway right there that would provide access to the MAC. They were not happy about that because it looks like it obviously would impact, if that were the building design they went with, it would impact it. So we've agreed to consider this alternate access, which means we lose a lot over there up against Pioneer Trail, but we would basically provide a right-ofway to the MAC property so that that connection could be built out in the future. And then if and when that property ever were to develop, the idea would be to put a four-way intersection, a full intersection there, shut down the right-in, right-out, and then that Liberty, or that Surrey Street, rather than going through the right-in, right-out, would then be routed through that full intersection if this ever happens in the future. It's, they don't know if they're going to do it or not. I don't think they have any current plans, but they want to remain, they want the possibility to remain open that that could occur. So this is how we would accommodate that future plan. And that's it, I believe, right? That's my last slide. So I, available for any questions here?
Okay, let's, thank you for that presentation, by the way.
Yes.
Commissioners, do we have any clarifying questions for the proponent right now? Commissioner Mehdi?
I'm just curious, as you were, you know, figuring out, you know, looking at this, I'm kind of like, well, gosh, what if it could have done that, or the road could have gone that way? I mean, it seems like there were a lot of different things to kind of balance, but did you consider having the access on Pioneer Trail align with where there can be a right-in and a left-out, and maybe using that outlot A to realign that intersection? Or was there any, and I get that that other property that's not part of this is sort of a little too close to align that intersection properly, but maybe with the outlot A. I'm just kind of curious if, you know, what kind of came to the design with the Surly Street and the way it's moving? And even if Surrey Street, instead of going all the way down, connected, you know, call it due west, and then just had like a mini turnaround cul-de-sac with those properties down in the southwest corner of it?
We did, we looked at probably every combination that you could think of, and the full intersection was just not warranted by the traffic study, and so to go to that extent for this project that is creating relatively minimal impact, didn't seem warranted, but the greater reason, I suppose, is that Hennepin County was adamantly opposed to that location because of the bad sightlines, and so they were adamantly opposed to any type of a full intersection there, and they didn't even want to discuss it. They weren't even real thrilled with the right-in, right-out, and their preference would have been not to have any new connections onto Pioneer Trail, but they are willing to look at that, and I believe that's going to be fine with them.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Marcus?
Thank you. Just to piggyback on that, the existing curb cut that you're going to use for construction, you said that will remain, is it just during construction for traffic coming in and out? Are you going to take, turn that over into, you know, curb cut when it's done?
Yeah. If we could put that slide up again that showed, yeah, right there. So if you can point to the Prom property too. So right there, Mr. Prom and his wife live right there, and there's a curb cut now that serves their driveway. So it was a shared driveway into the Prom property and into the Modine property. So the curb cut has to remain for Mr. Prom, and what we're going to do is relocate the driveway that used to serve part of his land over into his side of the property, so he would have a dedicated driveway that we're going to relocate for him. But the access, the curb cut, has to remain open until, as long as he's there.
Okay, so it'll just become his driveway essentially then?
Pardon me?
It'll just become his driveway essentially?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And then that, the last slide you showed with the MAC connection, future MAC connection, looked like it took out a house. Is that, am I, missed that red?
It does. Takes out one of our lots. So that lot, if we adopt that, that access point instead of the right-ofway off of Liberty Court, that lot would go away, and we'd be down to 23 lots.
Okay, so that'll be decided before you go to build it out?
Yes, yes. So I suspect that a condition of approval here will probably be that we have to implement that in our final design, and that's what I'm anticipating at this point.
Okay.
Because I know that's what the MAC would prefer. They don't want that at other intersections. At this point, that will probably be a condition of approval, I anticipate.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just had some concerns as I was reading through the plans for the water flow through that site, and I know you've done a lot of work trying to make sure that you can get the retention ponds and operating the way they need to, but it just seems, from not being able to get in and look at it the way we would if it wasn't where it is, but it's part of the MAC property and you can't really get into it now, but it has always occurred to me, I live in that, in that part of the city, that those slopes are considerable, and now you're changing a lot of what has been that way for many years.
Okay.
And I know you've made a good point in your plans to try to address that, but I just wonder if you would want to just re-acquaint us with what you went through to get to where you are now in terms of how you think it can be safely managed with regard to runoff and the use of the retention ponds and whatever other elements. I know there are other elements to your plan, so I, that was important.
Dave, do you want to come up and address that? Because you did the design on it, and so let me step down for one second, and then maybe we could put that marketing plan back up, because the infiltration basins are showing
Hello, Dave Nash with Alliant Engineering. In regards to the storm ponds, so one thing we initially did was geotech work and got lucky enough that this site has granular material, material that can infiltrate water. So our grading plan, basically, we does figure out where the lower ears were now on the site. That's where we're putting the water now. We had to adjust grades on the site itself because there's maximum grades we can have on roads, but we do end up having some significant retaining walls on the site too. But the ponds themselves, they're infiltration ponds, they, most of the time will be dry, like Pat said, on higher vents to hold water because we have to retain, they have to be designed for 100-year storm event, but they, so they'll hold water for a period, but then they'll drain down and be dry the majority of the time.
And you've had experience in other sites that you've worked on?
Yeah, it's common.
It's a common approach.
Some developments, example, Maple Grove, other, where there's heavy clays, we can infiltrate, so we end up doing a different type of pond, but preferably it is when we have sand, we want to do an infiltration system.
All right.
And like Pat said, we're, we've gone through several comments from the city. We're pretty much done addressing their comments. We've gone through with the watershed. We should be on the August 8 meeting, I believe. We've essentially addressed all their comments too, so it's, I think the plan we have is a good plan and should be going forward.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioners, any other questions? If not, thanks to the proponent, we'll address additional questions to do to you as we need to. Julie, you're doing the city report for us?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. As stated, the applicant is requesting approval for multiple land use applications. They are requesting approval for a rezoning from rural to R19.5. They are requesting PUD approval and preliminary plat approval. The property is guided low-density residential in the city's comprehensive plan, and the rezoning that they are requesting is consistent with that request, as is the development proposal. The property is zoned rural currently, which is not atypical in Eden Prairie to see a property remain zoned rural until such time as development is proposed, and at that time the rezoning request is made. They are requesting, as Mr. Hiller mentioned, several PUD waivers to be considered as a part of this project. The property is a bit unique, and as you are aware as commissioners, the PUD is a tool to address flexibility in cases where that makes sense as part of the master plan. So they are requesting waivers with regard to front yard setback as well as lot size and lot width. The staff is recommending approval of the waivers as requested. The last several single-family projects that have come before the Planning Commission and Council have been for R19.5 development projects, and the waivers that are requested are generally consistent with the types of waivers you've seen as a city in other recent development proposals. As Mr. Hiller stated, the project does propose a right-in, right-out connection out to Pioneer Trail extending Surrey Street through the property in order to provide that connection and address neighborhood concerns with regard to traffic out at Woodridge, I believe, excuse me, Woodridge, at the, further into the Tree Farm neighborhood. And as you mentioned, there are several sustainability components that are proposed as a part of the project. Because it is a PUD, they are, including several sustainability efforts, including those that were mentioned by Mr. Hiller. This property is adjacent to airport property, so those of you who've been on the, been on the commission for a little while will recall that just recently the city and other communities adopted the Jasbee Ordinance, which took into account airport zoning around the airport. This property is within Zone C, so just a slight refresher, because this isn't something we talk about at every meeting. Zones A and B primarily are properties that are owned by MAC, and for the most part, those properties are either runway or not-developable properties. Zone C is a much more expansive zone and includes many more properties extending quite a ways out from the airport, and development is allowed on those properties. There are uses that are looked at as well as construction and building height limitations. The use is consistent in this case with Zone C, and the building heights and construction height limits all are within the guidelines of the Zone C Jasbee regulation. So as a part of a development proposal, an airport permit is needed, so should this development move forward to final approval, an airport permit would be issued as a part of that and addressed through a development agreement. As Mr. Hiller stated, the Prom property is an exception to this, this development proposal. This development proposal is the Modine and the Fraser properties only. However, they did show us a ghost plan of how the Prom property could be developed. That was at the city's request to ensure that no property is left with minimal opportunity, if you will. So they did show how the Prom property could be developed. I do want to point out that that ghost plan provides for four lots, and that assumes in that illustration some waivers to be granted to lot width. And I just want to confirm with the Planning Commission that should this development move forward, that is illustrative only on the Prom property, and that project would have to come back through a rezoning and a development proposal, and we just wanted to provide that education with regard to the lot with requirements would need to be addressed at that time. So staff is recommending approval of the project, subject to the conditions that you have in your staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Julie. Any questions from the commissioners for city staff? Commissioner Mehdi?
Do you have any comments with regard to outlot A, and does the city have plans for it, or are we just keeping it as it is?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, outlot A is a remnant parcel. There's been some conversation internally about that maybe having the opportunity to provide for some stormwater needs in the area in the future, but that is a little bit to be determined at this point.
And then one other question, just with regards to the zoning, R19.5. We've had a few developments come through similar to this. The one that comes to mind is the one off of Valley View, and I think that was the 9.5, and it also had similar waivers, but the overall density of the site, because you have these outlots and things, you know, was still well below the, you know, the five per acre here, and here we are as well. Is, has the city considered, you know, looking at this particular zoning, since it seems we're kind of always making the lot width exceptions pretty frequently? I just didn't know if there's any thoughts there.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the R19.5 zoning district, I think it's fair to say, has not been overly used in the past. The R113.5 zoning district was essentially the city's bread and butter. That's what you saw a lot of the development proposals coming in at. Through the aspire housing, land use conversations that we had as a part of the comprehensive plan update, as you know, we heard from many focus group participants about the need to have a variety of housing types, particularly looking for this single-level type of living situation that is appealing to both empty nesters and younger homeowners as well. So I think the reason that we're seeing more of the R19.5 zoning district requests now is because of the kind of change in the market trends and, and what we see as a desired product in the community. So we have, that is certainly something we could look at in the future. It's not something, as I said, that we've seen a lot of up until the last, I'm going to say nine to 18 months.
Okay.
Commissioners, anybody else have a question for the city staff? Not seeing any. Our next step would be to open the public hearing, and anybody who is interested in speaking to the commission about this project and voicing opinions either for or against the project is welcome to speak. We would ask that you be relatively brief, and if you're covering issues that others have covered, then please, again, brevity is, is important, but also your voice needs to be heard. So with that, I don't have a list here if anybody signed the list, but I'm more than happy to just see a raise of hands of who, how many people would like to speak? Okay. Lady in the back corner, that's you? Yes. Please come on forward. Again, when you get up to the podium, please state your name and address and spell your last name so we know who's talking.
Can't see my face, can you? I'm Pat Pappas. I'm on 9631 Tree Farm Road, so I'm one of the Tree Farm neighbors. There's a lot of us here. I guess the big thing is we want to have the assurance of these two roadways, that that's what we want. If this gets approved, we want to be assured that this is not going to be going down Surrey Street and, and Woodridge. And that's, I think, our biggest concern here from all the neighbors here. So it says that it's applied for. I think Pat's done a good job with that. Thank you for listening. I'm also a Realtor, did I let you know or not? But, so that's our concern, is just to make sure that those two options are indeed going to be effective, and they're not going to go away.
Okay. Excuse me, but state that again, please, so I can make sure I understood you?
So, yes, so on the letter, you know, Pat had mentioned too that, that he has requested approval to keep the existing driveway in the Modine property.
Okay, so the construction traffic issue?
Yes, please. And that a sign would be, I would think a sign would be put up, construction only.
Yep.
So they're not turning down Woodridge with construction. Thank you very, it's a safety issue too with all the kids in the neighborhood. And then the other being the right-in, right-out connection, that those would indeed happen.
Okay.
Those are our concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Good evening. My name is Dana Nelson, and I am the My name is Dana Nelson, and I am the Director of Stakeholder Engagement for the Metropolitan Airports Commission. I thank you for allowing us some time tonight to speak to you about this property. The MAC owns and operates the Flying Cloud Airport located less than one mile west of this development site. As we're here tonight, we'd like to share our position about the planned residential development and to offer our requests to the city. These comments are similar to a letter that we sent to the city planner in 2016 upon our review of the rezoning and preliminary plat request for this property. We'll also be submitting a letter in writing capturing these comments. First, just a little bit of background about the airport. It plays an important role in the Twin Cities since it opened in 1943, continues to serve as an important transportation asset and reliever airport for Minneapolis-St. Paul International Airport. Flying Cloud accommodates personal and recreational aircraft, business general aviation aircraft, air taxi, flight training, and some military operations. In 2019, it was our busiest reliever airport in the MAC system with over 104,400 takeoffs and landings. Flying Cloud Airport adds 1,190 direct and indirect jobs to the area and drives $229 million in economic impact to the area. There are substantial community benefits from the airport, but for airport neighbors, noise is an issue, and I heard that a little bit earlier tonight. My specific work is centered around engaging city leaders and residents, so the airport and the people of Eden Prairie can thrive together. To that end, we concur with the transportation goals and strategies identified in the city's Aspire 2040 comprehensive plan to promote land use compatibility between Flying Cloud Airport and surrounding land uses, and to minimize the impact of aircraft noise upon noise-sensitive land uses. Aspire 2040 also identifies a policy to support the Metropolitan Council's land use compatibility guidelines for aircraft noise for new development within the noise exposure zone and one-mile buffer zone around the airport. The MAC and the City of Eden Prairie have a long history of working together to address noise concerns related to Flying Cloud Airport. For a 12-month period ending June 30th of this year, there have already been 11,201 noise complaints submitted from 83 unique addresses, and most of them coming from residents of the City of Eden Prairie. Thirteen percent of these addresses are from parcels adjacent to this proposed development. The city has an exceptional group of individuals on its Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission. We enjoy working with them to address concerns and minimize noise impacts to sensitive areas around the airport. It should be expected that if more residential construction is located near the airport, the Airport Advisory Commission, city council members, and the MAC will receive additional complaints. The proposed development area will experience aircraft noise day and night. The MAC does not have the authority to restrict aircraft operations at Flying Cloud in any way that would be considered arbitrary and capricious. As such, there's no mandatory curfew at the airport, and we cannot close the airport at night. Additionally, neither the MAC nor the FAA would be able to provide residential sound insulation for this neighborhood at any time in the future. For the record, the MAC strongly encourages the city to consider development other than residential for this location. However, if the city chooses to move forward with the housing plat, the MAC asks the city for the following. The MAC requests the city develop navigation easements with assistance from the MAC and drafting the language for each parcel to achieve all of the following. Commit to appropriate building code and performance standards to reduce interior noise levels at a minimum. They should comply with the Metropolitan Council's Building Performance Standards for Aircraft Noise. Notify potential homebuyers of the close proximity to the airport and the likelihood of aircraft noise. Notify potential, I'm sorry, waive all claims against the MAC for current and future noise and air quality impact. Ensure homeowners are properly notified of the property location within the Jasbee Zone C zoning area and comply with the zoning ordinance, structure height limits, and land use restrictions. Communicate MAC's intention to develop the adjoining land to the south of the proposed development area. The MAC has reviewed plans for this development, which shows three infiltration basins in the proposed development area. Stormwater ponds do attract wildlife. Birds do not, are not compatible a lot of times with aircraft activity. And we would prefer that these ponds be fast-raining or infiltrating 48 hours or less and dry under normal conditions. While we recognize this should be easily achieved, given the soils in this part of Eden Prairie, if it cannot, then the pond should have riprap side slopes and tall grass to deter waterfowl from the area. Additionally, common areas and proposed vegetation should be selected with consideration to the property's proximity to the airport. Overstory trees and fruit-bearing ornamentals in this area are to be avoided. Please request the developer to consider these issues when designing a landscape plan. Lastly, the MAC has adjacent property to the south, as I mentioned, and as was mentioned earlier, and we have been in discussions with the city and the developer, and we appreciate their efforts to design an alternative roadway access that does not require permanent or temp, I'm sorry, does not require permanent easements on MAC property, and it doesn't limit future development opportunities or access to the MAC's adjoining property. We request the city require that option to be implemented. We also request the city require the construction of the stub road to the parcel line be constructed along with the development of this area, be barricaded without snow plowing. The MAC would be supportive of this design option and is willing to work with the developer for temporary grading access. We'd also like a little bit of clarification from the city's perspective on the setback restrictions or requirements for the parcels particularly close to the retaining wall. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to give you these comments tonight. The MAC appreciates the continued partnership that we have with the city. We look forward to our continued work with the Planning Commission, the Airport Advisory Commission, and City Council to ensure Flying Cloud Airport and the people of Eden Prairie can thrive together. I am joined here with Bridget Reeve, the Vice President of MAC Planning Development and Environment, and Brad Jewfer, Manager of Community Relations. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Just given that MAC is, is here, does the commission have any clarifying questions for the statements that were made by Commissioner Marcus?
Yeah, just on the proposed future development, did I see that you guys are considering it to be office as proposed future development, or is it residential?
We, we don't have confirmed plans yet. I think the rendition that you saw was an office concept. We don't have any near-term plans to have that developed. It likely will not be residential just because of the compatibility issues with the airport with operations.
And just so I'm clear on, on kind of some of your comments, you are requesting that that access and intersection be, be done now as part of this plan?
That's correct, Commissioner. We would like that to be part of the plan and then just barricaded so that we, in the future, can continue the access on our property.
And is there any curb cut there right now? It's, it's nothing right now, correct?
It's correct. There's nothing.
Okay. And do, do you have a plan, you know, as, as the property owner there to, to pay for that particular, you know, the improvements that are on your lot, to allow that access from this developer to that street?
I'm going to ask Bridget to come up and help me address that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, thank you. Just a clarification, what we would be looking for would be construction.
One thing, could you speak closer to the microphone, and also give us your full name, so our secretary, Recording Secretary, how's that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Bridget Reeve, R-I-E-F, Vice President for Planning and Development with the Metropolitan Airports Commission. The piece we're asking for under construction is just the piece of connecting road that's on the developer's parcel, nothing on MAC property or no other connection to Pioneer Trail, just that little stub where they're losing a whole lot. We think it would be appropriate for them to build that as part of their development, so that whoever's living in that house, however many years from now, doesn't have construction right next door if our development were to go forward.
And, and let me just ask a clarifying question. You don't have any plans that, that the stub you're asking for them to build would then dead-end there, and you don't have any plans to develop the rest of that intersection at this time?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, no, not at this time. If you'll recall, we went through some zoning processes with you a couple of years ago for some other developable parcels on airport property, and so we would look to do that again, so that you're involved with what we're proposing to do and onboard and.
No, you have been very cooperative in the past on that. We appreciate that. Okay. Thank you. Any, or excuse me, any other? Thank you. We are still in the public hearing.
John Fedora, Tree Farm, 9820 Tree Farm Road. So this kind of opens up another whole can of worms, because the proposed developed area south of this, this proposal is the infamous Parcel Six, which has been kind of shoved aside. And now, when I read the, what is it, the Jasbee Report and the gerrymandered zones to accommodate development here, I also read that there needs to be continuous or contiguous open space, and the only way that that could happen is if there's no development in Parcel Six. So I don't know, I mean, this is getting into the whole airport development thing, but I just want to bring that forward, that I don't think they can develop Parcel Six because of the Jasbee requirement for continuous land space or open space. So that needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Anybody else? Would anybody else like to speak? See, yes, yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Patrick Prom.
Please, please stand up and come to the podium.
I'm Patrick Prom. I live on a.
Again, say your, say your name, and can you spell your last name?
Patrick Prom, P-R-O-M, on 2661 Pioneer Trail. Yeah, this speaker system is really bad. I couldn't hear hardly a thing the two women said. You gotta have some hearing aids or something.
Pull it close to your mouth, and it'll help everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, what they didn't, I didn't hear a word either one of the women said. It's just noise. She talks so fast, I don't know what she said, but what the whole thing was about. If somebody could explain some of it, it'd be nice.
Well, I think we're going to try to address the, some of these issues as we go forward.
I didn't hear what the issues were. She must have had about 40 of them. Neither woman could hear a word. Your speaker system is really bad, and maybe you need some hearing aids for some of us. Thank you.
I apologize for that. Hopefully, the discussion will clarify some of that for you.
Yeah. Thank you.
I do believe she had mentioned that they're going to send in a copy of the letter to, to the city that, that she just went through as well, so we'll have all of that in writing.
Thank you. There, there will be written documentation of what was said as well that will be into the record as it comes to the city. Okay, anybody else? Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Not seeing anyone. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Toomey made a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Mehdi? Second. All in favor to close the public hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Okay, let's see if we can address some of the issues here. I'm just going to see if I can quickly summarize, and Commissioners, help me, help me if I'm missing something that's important. I heard an issue of wanting assurance that the construction traffic would come in via the, what I would call the old driveway off Pioneer Trail to the north of the project, and that the right-in, right-out would, would be part of the project on, on, off Pioneer I also heard issues come up around education, that there are noise complaints and that noise is an issue, some education around what the Airport Commission can or can't do about that, a request from the MAC regarding several issues to mitigate, or sorry, minimize noise complaints, issues surrounding building code, notifications, waiver of claims, notifications of the location of the development relative to the airport, so people aren't surprised that there are airplanes flying over. Issues regarding the construction of the ponds and the landscaping relative to wanting to minimize any waterfowl or bird issues that could interfere with airport operations, and discussion regarding the alternative roadway proposal that would bring Surrey Road around parallel to feed into a yet-to-be-developed larger intersection west of the project. Is that a fair summary? Does anybody have anything they want to add to that?
That's all I had.
Okay. So, maybe we can start off with, maybe the city's comments about some of those issues, and I'm thinking around the noise issues, landscaping, and we'll maybe leave that roadway until the last issue to discuss. Julie, would you like to lead the city's effort to help us on those?
I will do my best, Mr. Chair. So in listening to Ms. Nelson's list of comments and concerns that they would like addressed should the development proposal move forward, I believe it's fair to say that the majority of those are expected comments and standard comments that the city receives on any residential project within a proximity of the airport, you know, such as addressing fruit-bearing trees and ponding, as well as noise mitigation for the units and notification of proximity of the airport. So the city does have standard language that we include in our development agreements with regard to disclosure statements for proximity to the airport, as well as requirements for noise mitigation with regard to, you know, appropriate building material, or building construction materials, and Mr. Hiller does address that in, in the narrative that was provided for the project, that their plans do include that. City staff would include that in the development agreement as well. So, you know, looking, looking through the list of items, she also mentioned talking about complying with Zone C requirements. As I mentioned earlier in my comments, this development would require an airport permit as part of approval, and that would address the, the Zone C requirements as well. So from a standpoint of those types of comments, I, I think they're pretty part and parcel for what we would expect for a development with this type of adjacency to the airport.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions, comments on?
I have a question for Julie. So there's no mandatory curfew at the airport?
No mandatory curfew?
There's no mandatory curfew at the, at the airport, and typically, how late do the planes fly?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission? There, there is not a curfew, as far as I know, and maybe Ms. Reeve or Ms. Nelson can address this in more detail, but I believe it is a 24/7 operation.
That, that's what I heard in, in the discussion, that there, it, it at least can be a 24/7 If you could just maybe confirm?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, that is correct. We're not able to have a mandatory curfew. We do have a voluntary nighttime ask of the airport users to refrain from operating between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. However, we're not able to totally restrict them or in any way fine them for operating during those periods.
Thank you for that clarification. Now, I think we all need to remember that there will be a, a written letter from MAC that describes these in, in maybe a little more explicit detail, in fact.
Now I have it.
Perhaps we have it already. It's good. Perhaps we have it already. It's good.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if I could also take a few more minutes, I just wanted to speak a little bit about the parcel six that Mr. Fedora commented on.
Yes, thank you. I missed that before, and I apologize, so.
So, in 2014, I believe it was, MAC, just a little context here for some of the commissioners who maybe weren't here at that time. In 2014, MAC came forward with a request for multiple parcels that they felt they had some development opportunity on. So, they were seeking rezonings of either airport office or airport commercial on a handful of properties. I believe it was five at that time, numbers, parcels two through six, if I remember correctly. And all of those rezoning requests went through a public hearing process at the Planning Commission and City Council. Parcels two through five were approved for either a rezoning to airport office or airport commercial. There has been one development that has been constructed since that time, that is the daycare just off of Pioneer Trail. I, forgive me, I'm.
Mitchell, I think, isn't it?
I'm forgetting the name of the daycare right now, but that is on a piece of property that is zoned airport commercial. The parcel six rezoning was not approved by the city because at that time, MAC had provided conceptual drawings for all of the parcels as to how they could be developed, because they didn't have a hard and fast developer in line right at that moment with a specific proposal. So, they were showing what potentially could happen on those properties so that nearby residents could ask appropriate questions or understand what it might look like in the future. So, in that last slide that Mr. Hiller included in his PowerPoint presentation, that is the conceptual graphic that MAC provided back at that time, showing potential office development on parcel six. There was some significant concerns as a part of that project because of the adjacent neighborhood, and there wasn't a specific development plan. It was just illustrative at that time. So, the city did not approve the rezoning for parcel six. So, any development, should it ever be proposed in the future by MAC on this property, would have to start with the rezoning process. So, that, that property is not yet zoned for office or commercial development, but it is kind of in line for that type of discussion, if, if that is a fair statement. So, just a little history for those who might not have been aware of the bigger picture.
Now, the gentleman who spoke talked about an open space needed and maybe some ambiguity, at least in his mind, on whether the Jasby requirements would not allow any development on that, on that property. Can you comment to that?
And Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my, excuse me, my comment on, on that would be that I'd have to take a harder look at the Jasby ordinance because there hasn't been any development proposal specifically talked about for airports, or for parcel six owned by the airport. So, you know, I haven't dug into that particular issue to be able to answer that in greater detail.
Thank you. Okay, so I think the, yes.
We could answer the question if you'd like.
Please do.
Thank you, Chair and members of the commission. My name is Brad Jufer, J-U-F-F-E-R, manager of community relations for the MAC. I was also a part of the development of the Jasby process on the MAC side that put together some of the technical documentation. Parcel six, as it became, as it was part of the Jasby process, part, the northern part of parcel six is, it became Jasby's Zone C. And so, the development that would be adjacent to this property would be Zone C, the same that this parcel is seeking, is as well. The southern part is included in Jasby's Zone B. So, there would be development opportunities in that space as well, but it would be limited by the density of the, of the property.
So, again, let me just repeat so I can make sure I understood that.
Yep.
The northern part of that is, would be Zone C with, which is a less restrictive zone. Still restrictive, but a less restrictive zone for development. And
Sure.
the southern part would be a Zone B, which again is open to development, but more restrictive. Is that a fair statement?
Chair and commissioners, that would be correct. There, there isn't any restriction on development in Zone C, other than the height limitations and some of the uses. So, like, you wouldn't be able to have, like, a high-powered VHF radio or something. But the land use itself is not restricted by Zone C. There is some land use restrictions in, in terms of the density of the development in Zone B.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think that helps us understand a little better. Okay, lots of information here. And I think we still have some interesting discussion to go on the roadway issue. Julie, again, I hate to throw it to you, but could you at least start the, the comments or your comments?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to defer to the city engineer, Rod Root.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the discussion was really on, on the construction access and the right-in, right-out, which are both, have both been discussed with the county and are both approved by the county. So, the, the construction access, as, as the developer did indicate, would go away with that last lot. They would leave that one lot open to develop the entire site, but once that last lot, where that access would be, there probably would be some minimal traffic at the, at the end there. But, but the right-in, right-out is part of the proposal. The, the connection over to the, the future MAC connection would allow for a full access at that location and that stub street in order to connect and eliminate that right-in, right-out. Because at the time when that connection is made with, with the MAC road, the right-in, right-out would go away. And that road would have to be realigned to, to follow into that property. So, and that would be a condition of, of the county as well. I mean, that was, that's already been discussed with the county. If, if and when that happens, that right-in, right-out would disappear.
Just a question for clarification. Is this road that's proposed or shown on this plan on the MAC property, that has or has not been approved by the county? Or this, and the city? Two questions.
The, the access has not been approved? No.
Okay.
The location is, from our discussions with the county, the county has spacing limitations, and that location is kind of the ideal location. If there's going to be any, any more full-access points along there, between there and, and Flying Cloud Drive, that's kind of the, the key spot where, where it meets their spacing requirements.
Okay, so this is simply a proposed future intersection?
Yeah, proposed future intersection. That allows for adequate site distance. It allows for the, for the right-turn lane and left-turn lanes, and it also meets their spacing requirements.
Thank you. I think, I think we might need your expertise here in a minute, because I'm still not sure, maybe I'm the only one confused here, but I'm still not sure I completely understand. Is there a chance we could put up Mr. Hiller's last slide where he ghosted in and, and read?
Yeah.
That extension that would be the stub to the MAC property? So, is what, it's, I, I think it's my understanding that the request, the request that was voiced by MAC is that that road be stubbed in, that, is it Surrey Drive, Surrey?
Yep, Surrey Street.
Surrey Street, that end of Surrey Street that goes down and eliminates one of the lots would be subbed in so that if, in the future, the MAC parcel was developed and that complete intersection were, were developed, that, that stub would already be in and connected. But that would not eliminate the right-in, right-out off of Pioneer Trail that's in the proposal. Is that correct?
No, not exactly, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The, what's shown on this graphic is kind of the bluish-green is the proposed development layout. And that's what would be built, built with this development proposal minus the one lot. So, as shown on the graphic here, what, what MAC is requesting is that this stub road be built to their property line.
Yes.
To this point.
Just to there. But the right-in, right-out?
Right-in, right-out would still be there.
Still be there.
When, at a point when this full access is built, then this right-in, right-out would go away.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify.
There would more likely be some reconfiguration of this roadway, because that, if, in that situation, there'd be quite a few S-curves in a, in a row there. So, this may end up being like a half cul-de-sac in the future, and there'd probably be a little bit of roadwork here to make that a little bit more efficient.
But the idea there is there would still be a pre-thought-out alternative with no houses in the way for the road to connect down to the MAC property. And yet, before that would happen, the right-in, right-out would still be there for Pioneer Trail, taking the local, taking at least some of the local traffic off the existing roadway that was a concern, I know, to the neighbors.
Right. The right-in, right-out would stay there until that full access gets developed.
Okay.
And I assume with that connection and the right-of-way needs there, the plat would have to be revised. Lot 21 would, would be larger. So, there'd be a, a resubmital, I presume, of, of the preliminary plat.
Okay.
Now, Julie could probably confirm that, but I assume we'd have to go through a modification or adjustment of some kind.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hiller, how would you like to make a few comments, particularly relative to that issue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Planning Commission. As I indicated earlier, we are open, excuse me, we are open to the idea. In fact, I expect it to be the case that that, that road stub would be put in. We're okay, we're okay building that out to the property line that, like the MAC is requesting. The exact shaping and the configuration of that, I think, is a detail that the engineers can work out on our next revision that we'll submit. The concept remains the same, and I think we just would be willing to work out those details to accommodate what, what Rod was just talking about. So, that concept wasn't fully engineered. It was just sort of, here's how it could work, and we got to tweak that a little bit.
I understand that. And, and understanding the implication is you lose a lot on?
We, we lose a lot. So, be it, if it gets the project developed and we can move forward and we can balance the needs of the surrounding neighbors and the MAC, I think that's the right way to do it. It's not just us in the game here, so I think we're trying to listen and accommodate as best we can.
Thank you for that perspective. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Commissioner Gooding?
I have a question. And when we were talking, one of the commissioners raised the question about drainage. And there was a comment related to there would be a significant amount of retaining wall on this project. And my question relates to, are the retaining walls going to be on private lots at all? Are they going to be in common areas? And who ultimately would bear the cost of 20 years from now when they need work? Is it something that's being donated to the city, to the homeowners, to the HOA? Who has to, where are they and who would recur that cost of repair?
Good evening. Dave Nash again with the line engineering. Per our plan, some of the plans are on private lots. Some of them are on city outlots, but we've already talked to the city. Any retaining walls that are on the city outlots, we have to get an encroachment agreement to install them there. And the intent of Norton Homes is all the retaining walls will be maintained by the HOA.
The HOA?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Marcos?
So, backing up to the road, I don't want to beat this, but just trying to understand the, the reason for building out the road now. I understand the idea of we don't want to tear a house down after it's built when you decide you want to build this road that's connecting to the future possible MAC development. Was it considered to just leave this lot not built? And knowing it might turn into a road in the future, is there, what was the reason behind having to put pavement down? If, especially if the comment was made that roadwork might be required to close off the right-in, right-out location, seems to me that we're going to be redoing some roadwork. So, it's not necessarily going to reduce the construction that much if we were to wait to build that road when it was actually requested by MAC. I don't know who to speak to.
Commissioner Marcos, what I, what I would say to that is, I guess we're trying to accommodate MAC's request. It doesn't need to be built out right now. We can certainly just provide a right-of-way so that there'd be legal access to that piece to build that stub out later, along with, in conjunction with the MAC property. When it develops, it does not need to be built out right now. That was the request of the MAC. So, an, an option also would be to just go ahead and leave a right-of-way there for future use if necessary, if needed. I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. That's another option, but.
Okay.
Okay. Interesting issues. Commissioners, do I have any thoughts or comments or perspectives? Commissioner Mehdi?
I definitely do. A couple of good things. It sounds like, in either event, with what we're, we're going to do with the MAC connection, that this right-in, right-out on Pioneer is going to be built, and that satisfies the neighborhood concerns there. And as far as the development agreement, that can contain the language regarding the construction access. So, I think we're addressing neighborhood concerns with, with either scenario there. I'm glad to hear the developers willing to work with MAC on that connection and that lot. I think that's a pretty big deal for them to lose a house if it were, you know. So, to me, it kind of seems like that would resolve pretty much all of our issues because they're willing to work with them. You know, the only funky thing is, you know, if, if we weren't doing this down the road, you know, when I look at this, I would align Surrey Street differently. I would bring that down below that row of homes and then connect to the intersection, because I think then you probably wouldn't have to lose a house. But it's like, we're doing all this planning around a non-existing, not-approved intersection that's going to serve an unknown future use in an unknown time for another private landowner. We're making a lot of accommodations for MAC. And so, I think the developers being, you know, very nice by doing these things. You know, if it were me, I think MAC, if they want that stub road, they should buy Lot 22 from the developer, and that can be the part of their property, and that can be connected down the road. But, all that being said, it sounds like, unless I'm missing something, it sounds like everything sort of is under agreement per what the developer said with regard to the MAC comment. So, I'm not seeing that there's any real huge issues here. Unless I'm, unless I'm missing something.
Other commissioners, any, anybody else want to voice an opinion here? Voice any thoughts?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, you know, the development, I drove down there over the weekend and sort of got out and walked around a little bit and looked at the property. I think, you know, it's a, it's a very hilly area. They're going to be moving a lot of dirt. I share some, some concerns about drainage, but they talked, you know, satisfactorily about the soil type and being able to absorb the water. It's closer to the airport than I live, and I live in a really noisy area, but people, you know, I bought there and people will buy there. That's, that's not for us, you know, at least not from, an issue for me. I am concerned about big walls being, you know, a homeowner responsibility or an HOA responsibility down the road. That, that can be quite expensive. And, you know, you don't think about those things when you buy a house. But it looks like a well-thought-out development, and the developer seems to really want to work with the neighborhood. So, it's pretty impressive.
Thank you. I'm seeing nods and, no, I, I tend to have opinions on these things, too. And I, I think I'm, I'm relatively in alignment with Commissioner Gooding on this. I like the development. I like the cooperative nature of, of going forward. You know, let's face it, MAC is a very important neighbor in, in our community. And so, I think within reason, we should do everything we can to work with MAC and, and attempt to take their concerns just like we take all the neighbors' concerns into consideration. I think we've done, I think this, this whole development is a better approach than the last one we, we looked at for this parcel of land. And, and I think the neighbors' concerns have driven a lot of that. And more power to you, because. have driven a lot of that, and more power to you, because, you know, you're the citizens of the community and we need to hear your voices, and, and I think they've been heard. So, the question in my mind, Julie, I'm gonna ask for your help on this a little bit. How do, how do we go forward on this? We could, we could put a motion forward. I mean, obviously, there, there's two, two obvious issues. We could deny this, but I guess I'm kinda getting the feel that that's not the, the direction of the commission. We could continue it to work on some more details. I think time is an issue here to some degree. And we could modify the existing motion to approve this with some appropriate language to include the one less unit and the stub road issue, and again, that still seems to be a little bit open, is it a finished stub, or is it a right-of-way stub to be finished at an appropriate time? Which I think is not 100% clear to me right now where, where, which direction we might take. I could use some sage advice.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, I think you've done a wonderful job of outlining the alternatives that exist before the Planning Commission this evening. The alternative that Mr. Hiller has shared in his narrative in response to the conversations between Norton Homes and MAC was put together between this evening and last Wednesday. So as you, as a commission, as others in the audience have said, yes, it would require a little bit more polishing up before it's, it's ready to move forward. But that has been something that the commission has in the past, made a recommendation, if they feel comfortable, we recommend approval subject to these conditions, and it needs to be addressed prior to city council review. So that would not be out of the norm for the Planning Commission to make such a recommendation, should they feel that's appropriate.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is we could put forward a motion to approve with the, part of that motion being to recommend the extension of Surry Street in place of, what is it, Lot 24 there? I don't know which lot number that is.
Twenty-two.
Twenty?
Twenty-two.
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 That lot, 22. And change the number from 24 to 23 units, and add the stipulation that obviously the plant, the, the planning department and the developer would have to fine-tune the issue between now and first reading at city council.
I would like to make a motion, I can give this a try, I think we can make it easy.
Let me just ask one last, let me just ask one last question. Any further discussion before we have a motion made by the, by the commission? Okay, please.
I'm going to move to approve the planned unit development concept review on 9.6 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 9.6 acres, zoning district change from rural to R1-9.5 on 9.6 acres, and preliminary plat to create 24 lots and four outlots on 9.6 acres, based on plans stamped dated July 16th, 2020, and the staff report dated July 27th, 2020, and stipulating the condition that prior to presentation to city council, the developer and MAC work out an agreement on how to address Lot 22 and provide for a future connection to MAC, intersection on MAC's property. And have that, you know, included in, you know, prior to the city council presentation.
Okay, any? I guess first off, do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
Commissioner Marcos, seconds. Discussion of that amongst the council, I'm sorry, amongst the commission. Any thoughts or comments? Maybe let me ask Julie, are you comfortable with the wording of that?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, I'm at a staff level, I'm comfortable with that wording.
So let me just clarify in my mind, sorry if I'm speaking out loud to clarify my own. So what you're basically saying, Commissioner Mehdi, is, is to allow them to decide how to, that the, the road will be extended to let, the parties, the city, the developer, with MAC's comment, MAC's input to that, decide how that be done.
Yeah, they, they come to an agreement on that prior to presentation to city council, and that agreement is going to be kinda based off of, obviously, what we hear tonight, but if there is no set agreement between MAC and the developer, you know, we need to have that agreed upon, and, and again, that, that, that plan would be to have a future connection, but for now, built.
I'm comfortable, I, I, I like the way, it's, it's a pretty open-ended, but it, it gives some flexibility for the parties to, to work together, with the goal being that there be something that would connect Surry Street to the MAC property at the end of, at the end. Okay. All in favor of Commissioner Mehdi's motion? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Good luck, you have a little bit of work to do before, before it hits city council, but I, I think in general, it looks like a good project, we're enthused that you're developing on that property, and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we're not done here with that one. We're done with that one. Our next public hearing is variance number 2020-02. Location is 16740 Rogers Road, and the request is to decrease site yard setback from 10 feet to 7 feet for a shed.
All right, thank you guys so much for having me here, it's my first Planning Commission meeting, so I really appreciate you letting me kinda speak my case.
Could you, could you tell us who you are?
Oh yes, sorry, my name is Marla Ekman, last name is spelled E-K-M-A-N.
Powerpoint.
Yes, and I know it's getting late, so I'll try my best to briefly give the highlights, but I have lots of pictures.
We're here, we need to give you as much due course as, as we can, so.
Okay.
Take your time and, and tell us what you need to tell us about your project.
Wonderful, well, thank you, I'll have you pull up the PowerPoint. All right, so overview, we would like to request a variance for a shed to be 7 feet from our neighbor's fence versus the 10-foot requirement. We've reviewed options on our property with two different shed companies, ToughShed and the Shed Shop USA, and have determined that this is the only location on the property that the shed could be built. We promise to use the shed in a reasonable manner and are requesting this variance due to circumstances unique to the property. If granted, we will not alter the essential character of what is being requested. The pictures on the next pages, which I will review, will show the practical difficulties and unique circumstances which will make it difficult to follow the 10-foot requirement from the shed. And also, as a side note, I have talked to our neighbor, which would be on the board of their property line, and they are actually fine with it, they said it will provide a barrier between them seeing the view of the Cedar Ridge parking lot, so they're actually in favor of it. So this is just an overview of our backyard, on the left side, we have a play structure, in the middle, we have a sport court, and then the proposed, proposed shed is on the right side of our lot. Our playset is 16 feet by 14 feet wide, and sits 19.5 feet on the left from the other neighbor's fence, and then 13.8 feet from the fence in the back. We have trees between the area of the playset and the fence, so we can't shift the playset over more, as this was the recommended playset from Crown of Minnesota. And there's a nine-foot gap between the playset and the sport court on the right side. This is showing you the setback, showing nine feet between the playset and the sport court. And then the sport court is 26 by 26 with a two-foot bump out where the hoop is. We have 12 and a half feet between the sport court to the fence, the back of the fence, and it's 10 and a half feet from the bump out of the fence. And there is 8.2 feet between the sport court and the location on the right where the proposed shed is. This is showing the 8.2 feet between the court and the proposed shed location, and there are two mature trees in between them. Other locations around our house, on this back left side of our house, we can't have a shed over here due to a garage door on the back and an egress window. On the right backside, we have windows in the basement that gives light to the lower level and main level of the property, so we can't block those views. And then this is just, again, showing a closer-up picture of our neighbor's side, they do not have any structures on their side of the property and do not have plans to put anything there. If we had to follow the 10-foot requirement, I'm just highlighting why it is difficult. If we did that, it would only allow five feet between a five-foot wide shed, and when I had talked to both shed companies, they said they just don't build sheds that width, that's typical width of a porta potty, and they said it wouldn't really be usable for a shed, for usable space. So our proposal is to, we'd love to have an eight-foot wide fence, or eight, eight-foot wide shed, which would allow seven feet between our neighbor's fence and the shed. There is 15.9 feet between the proposed shed and the back of the fence. So this is like an idea of what it could potentially look like, the slight design and color details could vary, and then this is just showing what that measurement looks like in the actual location. So I really appreciate your consideration, I do have some additional pictures if you needed any more pictures on the appendix after this slide.
Commissioners, any clarifying questions for the proponent? Nice, nice job on.
Thank you, I tried to provide as much, many pictures, Sarah's, straight, has been really nice and answering questions for me, so.
Always helpful, thank you.
Yeah.
Julie, you gonna represent the city on this?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, Mr. Chair members of the commission, as the applicant stated, they are requesting a three-foot setback variance in order to place a shed closer to the property line. As you're aware, as commissioners, all variance requests need to meet the three-part test addressing consistency with the comprehensive plan, practical difficulties, and reasonable use. In staff's review, staff does recommend approval of the variance as it meets those statutory requirements. The placement of the shed would allow for saving mature trees that exist on site, as well as providing some screening from an adjacent differing land use. So staff is recommending approval subject to the information that is provided in your staff report and the proposed final order.
Commissioners, again, any questions, clarifying questions? This is a public hearing, so is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this issue? Not seeing anyone? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Marcos moved to close the public hearing, do I have a second?
That was Higgins.
Oh, Commissioner Higgins.
Down there.
You guys, you guys are right in line, sorry.
I'll second.
Commissioner Mehdi, second. Commissioner Higgins proposed, and Commissioner Mehdi second. Again, any discussion on this issue?
Well, after we close the public, after we vote to close the public hearing, we have discussion.
Thank you, nice reminder. All in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Commissioner Marcos, do you have a, a comment?
I just wanna say, my concern was with the neighbor, and since they, she had the conversation with the neighbor, I trust that that was really what the outcome was. To me, that's the most important thing when we're talking about these kinda things. The only thing I would add is maybe consider putting some nice plants along it, and it'd be a really nice backyard attraction, I think, so.
Probably some mosses or something.
Exactly, so I think that, if that was done, then I think that was a, the neighborly thing to do.
Thank you, any, any other questions? Not seeing any? Do I hear, do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the final order number 2020-02.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. May I suggest we omit the motion by saying based on staff report?
Right.
Based on staff report dated July 27th and findings and conditions of the final order of, number 2020-02? Agreed?
Agreed.
Agree.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Good job in presenting, good luck with your shed. Thank you very much. Julie, any planners' reports?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we do have a planners' report this evening. So there was a memo shared in your agenda materials with this packet addressing electric vehicle charging stations. So a little history, back in January, a couple of residents approached the city council during council's open podium session before their meeting to share with the council that St. Louis Park had adopted an electric vehicle charging station ordinance, and essentially encouraging the city council to consider doing the same thing. So city council has asked the Planning Commission to review and weigh in on that particular item. So staff prepared a planners' report and included it in your agenda materials that provides some background on St. Louis Park's ordinance, and I'll briefly go through that. The memo also provides some context on what the city has been doing with regard to electric vehicle charging stations as a part of recent developments, and then concludes with city attorney review comment, and upon conclusion then, what staff is really seeking is some conversation among the, amongst the Planning Commission members as to what your thoughts are with regard to, should the city continue doing what it has been doing, should we work to prepare an electric vehicle charging station ordinance requirement to provide some discussion that staff can then carry forward to the city council for their, their review. So with that, just a little background on St. Louis Park's electric vehicle charging station, it was really prompted by St. Louis Park adopting a climate action plan, planning commission interest, and community trends. And what St. Louis Park did was, in their ordinance, they defined the three different types of industry-standard vehicle charging stations, and those are a Level 1, which charges a car in about eight hours, Level 2, which is a charging station that can completely charge a car in about two hours, and then a DC is considered the faster rapid charging, and that can completely charge a car in about 20 minutes. So they included those definitions in their ordinance, and in addition, then they created a sliding scale, if you will, to regulate how many electric vehicle charging stations would be required in certain types of parking lots. So for instance, a parking lot with 14 or fewer spaces wouldn't be required to have any electric vehicle charging stations. Those lots with 15 to 49 spaces would have to have one Level 2 station with at least one of those being in a handicap accessible parking space. And if it were a multifamily residential use, it would have to have a percentage, so 5% of the required parking would have to be electric vehicle charging stations, again, accounting for some handicap accessible opportunities. And then lots with 50 or more spaces are required to have 1% of the required parking be a Level 2 station, and again, accounting for a handicap, and if it were a multifamily residential use, it would be required to have 10% of the required parking. So it gets to be a little bit of a mathematical equation, but you, you get the notion of the sliding scale. In addition, multifamily residential and non-residential parking lots are required to install wiring for electrical capacity to accommodate future electric vehicle charging stations for at least 10% of the required parking of the lot. Timing is not dictated by the ordinance, rather just the mechanisms essentially are there for, for future installation. They also, because the, St. Louis Park was, you know, concerned about costs that could be associated with that, they did include a cost cap. So if the analysis is completed and the cost to install the electric vehicle charging equipment exceeds 5% of the total cost of the project, they can submit that information to city staff and the city council for consideration of reducing the number of electric vehicle charging stations. charging stations that would be provided with the project. So that's, in a nutshell, what St. Louis Park put into effect with their ordinance. Now, when the city council heard the presentation at open podium, one of the questions that was raised was whether or not businesses in St. Louis Park were required to offer the charging stations free of charge. So just in order to maybe help you with your discussion, understanding what some of the questions were that were raised during city council review. In taking a look, preparing for this evening, and taking a look at other communities, we did find two other cities in the metro area that do require electric vehicle charging stations in their ordinance. City of Bloomington adopted one just this past December, and they do require them in multifamily residential projects at a rate of one stall for every 50 units. And, you know, they talk about how it can count toward their parking requirement. There may be other mechanisms that they use to encourage them, but there is that code requirement. Golden Valley includes electric vehicle charging stations as one of 17 options that developments can basically get credit for when applying for a planned unit development. So some communities will score their PUDs, and that's one of the options that they offer in consideration for a PUD. So as you can see in your memo, we have included electric vehicle charging stations in a variety of recent projects: Applewood Point, Castle Ridge, which is the Presbyterian Homes project under construction, Central Middle School, the library, Golden Triangle Industrial Development, Paraville, Southview Senior Living, Eden Ridge, and the Villas at Smith Village all have included electric vehicle charging station or capacities as a part of that. So we did have a conversation with the city attorney as well, preparing for this evening, and in getting their feedback. The state of Minnesota building codes do not require the voltage necessary to supply an electric vehicle charging station in single-family developments. So those single-family developments like Eden Ridge or the Villas at Smith Village, their development agreement specifically includes language that says the developer has voluntarily offered to install the wiring and the mechanisms necessary, and that that particular provision is not enforceable by the city, but that they, the developer, have offered to do that, and we're documenting it in the development agreement for future reference. So that's how we've been addressing it in those single-family projects. It is the belief that once the building code catches up, if you will, that at that time ordinances could be adopted requiring electric vehicle charging station in single-family developments in an enforceable manner. But as of right now, the city could require electric vehicle charging stations in surface parking lots or in multifamily development situations. So a lot of information in a short amount of time, but again, just to recap, we're looking for some conversation among the, amongst the planning commission on what you feel would be appropriate moving forward with consideration of electric vehicle charging stations.
Thank you. I think a very timely topic. Commissioners, thoughts?
I have a couple thoughts.
Yeah.
Quickly. Sorry.
Share them with us.
So for the most part, all the new construction that's going in for homes, they have these stations built in, correct?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as you'll see in that list that was provided in your report, Eden Ridge, which is a recent project right off of Valley View Road, has included it in their single-family garages, as well as the Villas at Smith Village, which is right on County Road 4 and 212. They propose to include it in their garages as well. But I believe those are the only two that are single-family. All of the other projects are either multifamily or industrial, or public, like the Central Middle School.
I would have said the same. I would have said it's probably more the exception now in a single family than the rule.
I'm not done, but go ahead.
Oh, no. Finish.
No, I want to hear it. Okay. So I was reading an article about this, and it said that Ford and GM are planning on, well, Ford's planning on putting 35,000 of these stations across the United States, and GM's going to follow suit, but they don't have a time for it yet. I was wondering if maybe the city could get into an agreement with, like, a car company like that and have them install a couple of the charging stations in a park, like Purgatory Creek or something, where people could charge their cars, run across the street, get something to eat, and, you know, because it's not like going to the gas station. And anyways, it's just my thought.
Sure. Good input. Commissioner Gooding?
Question for Julie. The ones in the, like, Applewood Point, Central Middle School, do you know enough yet to know are they, are they going to be, were the charging, were the person using the charger pays for the electricity? Or is it, are they targeted to be free?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I can't speak to the Central Middle School example. It's my understanding that the ones for, say, Applewood Point, because it is in their underground parking structure, so it would be available to their tenants. Now, whether that's an additional charge as a part of the lease, that I can't speak to, but it would be available for their tenants more so than a surface lot for visitors. Is that your question essentially?
Well, yeah, I was just trying to get a feel for which way they tend to go. I mean, I have a couple of friends that have electric vehicles, and most of the places they go to plug in, they pay. You know, you put your credit card in, and you get your charge and that kind of thing. So I was wondering what direction these were taking. I saw the comment where St. Louis Park, I think it was St. Louis Park, their city ones were targeted as free, and just was trying to get some information on, in the PUD process, what you all had managed to do, or if it was even defined at that point.
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, the development agreements for those projects does not include that amount of detail of whether it would be free or fee, so that would be a property owner's prerogative.
Commissioner Mehdi?
As it relates to if we, as a city, are going to draft an ordinance around this, my thoughts are, I do not think we should require that the charging stations be free of charge. I think that should be up to the property owners. I think that we treat residential, multifamily, and commercial differently. I am more in favor, I'm pretty open to kind of thoughts and things on this. I'm not against a requirement, but I would say I'd maybe lean more in favor of providing incentive for developers to provide electric vehicle stations or wiring to do so. Examples could be, you know, trading, you know, if you provide vehicle stations, you maybe get credited or reduced parked identification fees in relation to the number of stations you might provide, maybe more flexibility on landscaping or tree replacement fees, that kind of thing. Those are just some ideas as to some sort of incentive or reward to provide those stalls. I also think that we should, in the language, clarify, are we requiring that the capacity for, the electrical capacity for a station to be installed, is, we just need, that we need, like, a single-family home or whoever developer to build it with the capacity for one, or are we going to actually require them to install the full charger station? So those are two different things to weigh, capacity versus the full station. You know, I think at least providing capacity is pretty, a good thing. We're going to look back and glad we have the capacity. Also, so as it relates to, so, you know, if you have, I don't have an electric vehicle, so I don't fully, can't fully appreciate, you know, how it's most frequently charged, but I, you know, I assume that, you know, 99% of everyone, you know, they're charging it when they get home, in their garage or apartment garage, wherever. That's the main time that they're charging their vehicles. So, you know, we want these to be available in residential properties. On the commercial side, let's say you're a retail development, and you have, you know, fast casual food place, a Panera next to, you know, Fan Sams, and then cellphone repair. These are places where nobody's even in the parking lot for more than 20 minutes, and it seems really impractical to require having a charging station, and one that I don't think people, people aren't really going to be there for long periods of time. Some commercial, people are there for long periods of time, like office, and, you know, I had to think, but like, maybe something like a mall, a regional mall, people go in there for maybe a couple hours or more. So I think those are some things we should distinguish on what we're requiring, and I think it would be a little aggressive to require kind of regular commercial, just any commercial to have charging stations, but something maybe, I'd lean maybe towards office and residential, where people are actually more likely to use the charging stations. I think that covers my thoughts on that.
Good thoughts? Commissioner Marcos?
Yeah, I think those are really good points that you bring up of the varied types of use. And I do think for single-family, having a wired, having the opportunity for a person to move in and be able to put their own station in without having to go through some major electrical work would be a really nice forward-thinking approach for us to take in terms of, this is the future, and even if the person that initially moves in doesn't use it, the next person will probably, you know, let's think, think what the future might look like. And I think when you're building those homes, it's a minimal cost versus coming back and later doing it. So I don't necessarily see that as a lot to ask of someone developing single-family homes versus, yeah, is it necessary, and will it even really be used if we are requiring them in spaces that people don't spend a lot of time?
I'll just add to, just in general, I think one of the things we don't really know, you know, I think of a gas station, you know, it's almost, to me, this is the equivalent of requiring every development to have a little gas pump for people to kind of top off every time they park in a shopping center. You know, like, I know it's different, but again, I'm like, why is this on to just everyday uses and developments to provide these? Again, as I said, I think I'm leaning a lot less towards really having these just all over the place, and it's really more about where are people going to be parked for long periods of time, and actually charging, and kind of focusing on that.
Again, and, you know, your point about residential is well-made. The way these things are really targeted, Excel has set up, if you charge it from midnight to 8 o'clock in the morning, you pay about a penny and a half a kilowatt versus 11 or 12 cents during the day. So people drive them home, they put them in their garage, they plug them in, and they charge them at really low cost, right? So the real charge is done at night. If you've been out driving around a lot and you need a hit, you know, Hy-Vee has some, the Tesla company has them all over the place, they're rap, some of them, most of them are rapid chargers. But the real place that people use them to charge is their homes. And obviously, reading this, the city attorney doesn't think that it's, at this point, consistent with the electrical code to make that a mandatory, but it sure would be nice to be able to encourage the developers to, as Rachel said, to put in the pre-wiring in the homes, because it is, it's very low cost to do that stuff up front. And, you know, you want the backbone for a second meter and those, and it's peanuts when they're building a house, if you do it up front. Quite a lot of money to an order to go back and retrofit it after the fact. So, you know, if there was a way to do that, I think it would be well worth the city supporting something, at least encouraging it strongly, and at the point in time you could do something to make it a requirement for residential to have at least the backbone for it, it might be warranted if we, you know, it sounds like we can't do that now.
Thank you. I'm going to repeat a lot of what you guys have said, and just to reinforce it from my own personal opinion. I think to use whatever we can to strongly encourage residential, new residential developments to have the capacity for it is very important. Because I agree with Commissioner Gooding, that's going to be a primary use for people with electrical, electric cars, and it's crazy not to be looking to the future and say there's going to be a bunch of electrical, electric cars out there. So I think the residential development should be prepared for that. Obviously, there are legal issues when it becomes part of the building code, which I trust it will. I think we won't have to have an ordinance, because the building code will take care of it, of course, in residential. I think Commissioner Mehdi brings a great point. First, or secondly, I think multifamily, we ought to require it. I don't know to what level or to what degree, but multifamily, I think there ought to be some requirement of charging stations, probably a function of size, and I don't know what that formula is. We'd have to think through that. For commercial and office, I think large commercial, large office ought to have some, ought to, we ought to require some stations. Again, at what level, I don't know. Your point about small commercial is a good one. You know, strip malls where people are going to be in and out there, so a small commercial development is a question mark in my mind on whether you require it. As for costs, to me, that's a market issue. I think we, the city, shouldn't, shouldn't step into the cost issue of who pays for it. I think if somebody wants to put the capacity in there to meet the city code and say, you got to stick your credit card in to use it, more power to them. If they feel that it's an amenity that helps them get customers into the parking lot or residents into the multifamily dwelling, and they want to offer it for free, more power to them. To me, market forces should take care of that. So I think I'm basically in alignment. Any other thoughts? You know, Commissioner Toomey's comment about, are there other sources to help, to help get electric charging stations in our community paid for in some way, shape, or form is something that would be very interesting to look into. I don't know who's, who that really fits into, whose responsibility that fits into, but it's a good comment. If somebody's willing to pay money to put these charging stations somewhere, why don't we get some of them put in our community?
I have one more comment. I agree with everything you've said. An additional comment to this is, I think it'd be, I would, I guess I would recommend the city reach out to a few of the larger multifamily owners in Eden Prairie and get their thoughts. They tend to track these things, too, and I think of Timberland, because they have, like, the newest project, and I think they put some vehicles and stations in, in Elevate. How many, you know, are they seeing a demand? How many people, you know, I think it just helps to, you know, some of these apartment owners in the city have many, many units, and they can kind of look across their portfolio and say, this is kind of the demand we see and what people want to do. We'd like to charge, we don't, just gathering info from them, I think is a good step to take, just so we have that info in mind as ordinance is being, you know, drafted.
I think we've got to be really aware of the market forces, which I think is exactly what you're suggesting, but I think we ought to be on the front end of giving the market a bit of a push, too. That's my view. I'd rather be sooner, I'd rather Eden Prairie be on the front end of that, of this, than on the rear end of it, from my personal standpoint.
Thank you.
Okay. Any members' reports? Seeing none, how about a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Toomey moves to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Gooding seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
[inaudible].
Commissioner Toomey moves to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Gooding seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.